I call this pre-meeting briefing of the Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD Board of Trustees to order at 6:00 PM on February 6, 2020. The purpose of this pre-meeting briefing is to conduct a briefing session with administrative staff regarding the posted agenda for the regular board meeting scheduled for 7:00 PM on February 6, 2020. For the record, the board members present are Tara Hrbachek, John Matthews, Sally Derrick, Randy Shackman, and myself, Guillermo Ramos. Right now, I'd like to open it to public comments. Are there any, Dr. Chapman?
No, there is not.
Okay. Briefing session with administrative staff. Board members, do you have any questions regarding the consent agenda items? Ms. Hrbachek?
Are y'all gonna have further? I heard you say on the HVAC, are y'all gonna...
We will. We're gonna have some administrative reports on E-K and Q, and HVAC is K. Four K.
Okay, so on L, the HVAC units for Phase 1 bond, I love the training center piece. That was really a great add to that. I think that's a value add for our kids, so I like that. My question on the 457 units, remind me of the timing of our five years on our completion of bond projects. Are those units gonna sit for five years? Does it impact the maintenance and the warranty, or does that go in place at installation?
Turn your speaker.
This purchase is just for Phase 1, which is the four McQuarre, Sheffield, Turner, and Field. This purchase just covers those buildings.
Okay.
We will buy them as needed, and once they've done a factory commission start, that's where we kick off our warranty.
Okay, perfect. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Dr. Chapman, besides the administrative reports that you just mentioned, are there any other items that you wanna pull, that you wanna discuss?
No, just three.
Okay.
So, moving to four?
Moving to four, Dr. Chapman.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we're gonna have Mr. Maroney, he's gonna cover four topics, 4E, 4K, and 4Q.
Good evening, members of the board. Dr. Chapman, thank you for this opportunity. I'd like to start with just a quick construction update. It's only been two weeks, but we're flying along with our capital projects over at Landry. We moved up to about 75% complete, and those temporary walls are gonna be coming down pretty soon here in March, though, like I've warned about Strickland, that's only the first stop. I know it's exciting to see the classrooms and the spaces, but we've got a lot of furniture, punch list type items to do. So, as you see those walls down, that doesn't mean we're open just yet. We've got a lot of work ahead of us. But in that collaboration space, those kinda two center hubs, you can see photo on the left is from last week's meeting. Light fixtures are starting to drop, floor finishes are starting to go in, all things are starting to fall into place, very exciting. Over at the multipurpose building, challenge there has been getting electric. Encore, our friends have kind of left us a little high and dry, so we had to remind them who lent them a parking lot when they needed it, and who was there when they needed us. Got them back in action, so we're gonna have power by March 1st, which will keep things going. Again, we're gonna open up on the technology side with that new NOC room moving in. You can see it on the left there with the upgraded HVAC to keep all the new servers cool. Over on the banquet hall, glass is going in, very large spaces. Exciting part of that is that commercial kitchen and cafe space, so starting to see equipment arrive there. Timing on all of that is gonna be getting our technology folks starting to move in in March, April. They will bring the trading rooms online in May, and then that banquet hall, cafe space, late May, early June for occupancy there. Bond 2018 is finally starting to take traction. Next week, next meeting, not next week, thank goodness, next meeting in March, we'll be bringing forward the McQuarre guaranteed maximum price for the start of construction in May. Remember, that's that main hallway renovation in the library space, as well as a new roof and new mechanical systems, which is a big part of that HVAC purchase. Over at New Sheffield, we're starting to take shape, here's a rendering of the new building. We had a winter showcase over at Turner last week, and these were the renderings that we used to celebrate those schools, that each campus got a board printed out by our architects that they could share with the community. So, we wanted to make sure you guys had seen them in this meeting as well. Design runs through most of the summer. Starting construction, like I said, with the permitting part of Dallas, we'll only be starting construction in late July on that, this project. Over at Field, with our partners at Huckabee, working through our design, like I said, our initial estimates are coming in right within budget. Jackson has done an excellent job estimating McQuarre. I'm very proud that their GMP and their early estimates line up, so I'm confident in their work, that that project will also be beginning this summer. Turner, following the same schedule as Vivian Field, with the construction start in May, and we're in the construction document phase on that project. Along with the construction update, we have four larger operational items coming along. With the board objective number four, to optimize facility, safety, security, infrastructure to be adaptable to our student needs, we spent a lot of time working through these items. A big challenge is to find items that balance what we can afford today and what we need tomorrow, to be robust enough that they are operational and serve our need, but are flexible enough that as upgrades happen, we can adapt to them. The first item out the gate is the bus system. It's all from the executive summary, we're going for a full digital system. What this allows us to do is integrate into our security cameras, so that when there's an event on a bus, we can correlate that to events that are happening on the campus. When we have retention policies, our data is housed in the NOC. Rather than being housed on the bus or in a local server, all of that information would reside with our technology friends, so it can be retrieved easily. This is a complicated system, and that's what's taken us this long to fish out the best solution for the district. We'll be proposing four to, three to four cameras, depending on the size of the bus, plus a new NVR recording system, that when the bus comes home, it would upload through the Wi-Fi to our network, and then ultimately to the NOC.
Which, you know, may explain what it used to look like for on a bus, is if you found an incident... You'd hear about it a few days later, then you'd have to go retrieve the data, then review the data and move forward. Now, as he was saying, it's all gonna go straight to the NOC, and we can see it immediately. Is that one system recorder for each bus?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it's not, okay.
Each bus has its independent system. Once it comes back within range, the systems can be upgraded with Wi-Fi and be upgraded with cellular module if we choose to, as needed basis. It is cost prohibitive at this point, the need isn't there, but if it was, we could adapt to it. And that's that part of designing systems that are adaptable to be in the front as we need them, but not so ridiculous we can't afford them today. You can see that the dashboard is, again, familiar with all the other security dashboards that we'll have, so we won't be running independent systems. One system, one set of training works across the board, for both bus cameras, all the way through our other security. HVAC purchase, this has been a fun one. When I came to the board on the design bill, we said that each delivery method is unique to the needs of that project. This idea of owner purchase contractor-installed HVAC units can save a lot of money. What it also does is allows the district to get the best value for the district based on its needs. We're not going through three translators of the engineers, the architects, the general contractor, the subcontractor installing it, then to the relationship with the manufacturer. We've now established a direct line conversation with the manufacturer. The partner that we've selected in this case is Texas Air or Aon. They are exceptional. Life expectancy, 25 to 30 years, heat exchange, 10 years, system controls integrate very well with our Distech systems, parts are well manufactured, and to the point that our partners actually come to us and said, "We believe in our units so much that we will give you 10 years parts and warranty on the unit." It's exceptional. We have 776 of those units currently at 11 locations in the district, so we know this partner, it's not new. We're just really excited to go this far with them. Estimated savings for doing this to projects, about half a million to a million dollars to the bond projects. Since we haven't updated enough systems, let's dive into phone systems. As we know, we have a phone system that is an old copper line system. We're struggling to find parts for it, we're struggling to find service agreements for it, so our suggestion is to upgrade to a VoIP network system partnering with Cisco. This would happen May through August, so over the summer, we would roll out handheld units to the campuses. It's funded through a combination of money at the NOC, as well as local funds. The NOC is covering the front end portion that resides at the NOC, which is a new front end, and the solution is a Cisco service. Tiff fund, sorry. NOC is NOC and Tiff, so.
Yeah.
And that's my update.
Anyone else have any?
Board members, any questions?
What are you still doing here? Aren't you supposed to be busy?
[laughing].
Thank you for that report. Dr. Chapman, are there any other administrative reports?
No, sir.
Okay, so we'll move on.
Yeah, let me just walk through briefly. So, the CV 2030 Committee is complete, and so they have done their entire 10-year plan. They're gonna be putting that together, and then we're gonna have five students that will be presenting to the Board of Trustees on April 2nd. You'll hear that plan, hopefully you'll approve the plan, and then on April the 16th, we're gonna bring to the board, this is during the work study, you're gonna bring to the board the development through Dr. Asbury of the district goals through House Bill 3, the Early Literacy Plan, the Math Plan, the CCMR Plan. All of those plans need to be approved prior to the last day of instruction. So, you'll hear the presentations from the different organizations, you'll develop the plans through Dr. Asbury as a facilitator, and then on May 7th, we'll ask the Board of Trustees, we'll give you some time to let that sink in, and then for the board to consider approving that at the May 7th board meeting. Again, we need to do this prior to the last day of instruction for the year, so you're gonna get a lot of information on the 16th as we move forward. Backing up, February 20th is whenever Kathy Minsberg will come, do a training with the Board of Trustees. You've received your board evaluation, self-evaluation, if you don't mind, please make sure you send those to Kathy, so that she can have those in time. I believe the deadline was the 17th, Mr. Mersch, the 17th, so that she can have that information ready, so she can conduct the training on the three topics that we've discussed prior to.
Moving on to agenda item number five, I guess we're adjourning now?
Yes, sir.
Board members, we've reached the end of the agenda for this pre-meeting briefing. We are adjourned at 6:13 PM. I call this regular meeting of the Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD Board of Trustees to order at 7:00 PM on February 6, 2020. Board members, district staff members, and members of the audience, you are free to join me in standing as Aaron Carney, President of the Metrocrest Chamber of Commerce, provides a message, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Tara Hrbachek, and the Pledge to the Texas Flag led by Sally Derrick.
If you'll join me by bowing your heads. Good evening, it is an honor to be here this evening and lead tonight's invocation. Lord, we ask you for your blessing this evening as we gather to show our appreciation for the teachers and others who work tirelessly to instruct our children, both in the classroom and in life. We thank you for your dedication. We ask that you watch over and support those with compassionate spirits who guide and shepherd our youth. Grant them your strength and patience as they selfishly give of themselves, often without due recognition. Strengthen them with the sense of compassion and sound character that lead them to their calling. Lord, we ask that you continue to help our school board seek your wisdom, guidance, courage, and strength. Be with them in their deliberations and help them be wise in the decisions they make for the good of all who have placed their trust and confidence in their leadership. Lord, give them the insight to lead with integrity, that their decisions may reflect what is right and good, and always put students their educational success and safety first. Our children are our treasures, and those we entrust to watch over them deserve our respect and wholehearted support. Lord, may your wisdom guide the educators here today, and give them the strength of will to believe in them and inspire those in their charge now and for many years to come. Lord, continue to be with us daily, reaffirming that when we work together with your guidance, we truly can be the exception. In your name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Parking lot's full, just in case anybody didn't know that. Thank you, Ms. Carney. As a district, we dedicate all our efforts and resources to our goal of high achievement for each student. The board uses this goal to guide all deliberations, decisions, and actions. You will get to see all deliberations, decisions, and actions of the board in open session, with the exception of some items which may be discussed in a closed session, as stipulated in the Texas Government Code, Section 551, commonly known as the Open Meetings Law. These items typically deal with personnel matters, consultation with their attorney, and real estate. For the record, the board members present are Tara Hrbachek, John Matthews, Sally Derrick, Nancy Klein, Randy Shackman, and Guillermo Ramos. We constitute a quorum and may conduct business on behalf of the district. Ladies and gentlemen, y'all look so excited. Before moving on to the next agenda item, I would like to remind you that the board encourages comments from citizens of the district and from district employees. Anyone wishing to speak, either as an individual or as a representative of a group, may do so during Agenda Item Number 3, Audience for Guests. Please submit your request to do so on one of the forms provided on the table that's outside the north entrance to the boardroom. You may place the completed form in the box provided out there on that table, or present your completed form to Administrative Assistant Ms. Kim Castanon, who is over here by the laptop. When the board addresses Agenda Item Number 3, Audience for Guests, you will be invited to the podium to speak to the board. So, Dr. Chapman, our next agenda item is Special Presentations and Recognitions.
Yes, thank you. Tonight, we're gonna recognize two students from RL Turner for earning Academic All-State. Ms. Parnell?
Good evening, Dr. Chapman and board members. Yes, tonight, we are proud to recognize two of our student athletes for academic achievement. Congratulations to Caitlin Durkey, a senior at Turner High School, on being selected as a 2019-20 volleyball Academic All-State recipient, as well as congratulations to Jalen Lewis, a Turner High School student and senior, on being selected as a 2019-20 volleyball Academic All-State recipient. Principal Brooke Hall is with them, if she'd please come forward, and let's congratulate these young ladies on their achievement. Next, we'd like to announce our Teachers of the Nine Weeks, and our first campus is McQuarre Elementary School, and the principal is Eddie Reed. The teacher is Stephanie Buckingham. She's a first-grade teacher, and she has been with the district for five years, and this was said about her, she has a heart for kids, which is why her kids show phenomenal growth every year. She builds relationships with the parents in her class to ensure student success. She's a collaborator with everyone on the campus. She is the complete package. Congratulations. Blaylock Middle School, Principal Dr. Keith Davis. The teacher is Karen Grudaya. She's an eighth-grade language arts teacher. She's been with CFB for eight years, and she is known as a teacher who goes above and beyond for her students and her team. Her students know she is fully invested in their success, both emotionally and academically, and she ensures that they are successful. Congratulations. Bush Middle School, Principal Matt Warnock. The teacher is Michelle Morris, and she's a reading teacher and has been with CFB for five years. Ms. Morris not only serves as a reading teacher, but as a chair for the Sunshine and Spirit Committee. She's a sponsor of wildlife, and is our representative on the District Improvement Council. She advocates and cares for each student and each staff member every day. She's the heart of our campus. Congratulations. Next, we have Field Middle School, Principal Chad Hunter. The teacher is Heidi Alexander. She's a dual-language social studies sixth-grade teacher and has been with CFB for seven years. Ms. Alexander excels at transforming her classroom into a place where rigor and management are flawless, yet she executes this with a loving heart and compassion towards her students. She is intentional and awesome at all she does. Congratulations. Long Middle School, Principal Sarday Dockery. The teacher is Francine Lisanje. She's a sixth-grade language arts teacher and has been with CFB for three years. She is an excellent leader and mentor, serving as an instructional facilitator, sponsor for NJHS, LMS Star Dance Group sponsor, all the while while completing her master's at Texas Women's University. She is an amazing person with a big humble heart and works extra hard for the Long students. Congratulations. DeWitt Perry Middle School, Principal Adam Toy, and the teacher is Fatuma Mohammed. She's a special education teacher who has been with CFB for two years, and has said that she has transformed our special education MAC classroom into an interactive learning environment where students are learning life skills along with advocating for themselves. She is a product of CFB schools, and we are honored that she's chosen to be a member of our DeWitt Perry family. Congratulations. Grimes Education Center, Principal Melissa Wesley. The teacher is Elizabeth Day, and she's a Functional Skills Workshop Program, and has been with CFB for 10 years, and Liz Day has been an integral part of the building of our workshop program at Grimes. She was hired mid-year last year for this position and quickly became a strong member of the team. She teaches, cooks, drives the bus, and in general does whatever it takes to provide a strong program for our students. Congratulations. Salazar Learning Center, Principal Melissa Wesley, and the teacher is Robert Giraud. He's a sixth, seventh, and eighth-grade social studies teacher and has been with CFB for six years. Robert is an outstanding young teacher who has worked his way up through the ranks in CFB. He started at Salazar as an aide and loved working with the students so much that he earned his teaching certification. He started as a PE teacher, then moved to social studies, which is now his passion. Congratulations. Next, we have our Employees of the Nine Weeks, and we'd like to start with our Facilities Employee, and the recipient is Monique Finacy. And her supervisor is David Hanna, and we want to read why she is being recognized tonight. It's an honor to recognize her for her quick response recently and passion for her students. In recent months, she prevented a situation from happening on her bus that could have been quite severe. While en route, a student tried to inflict self-harm with a pair of scissors. Ms. Finacy quickly pulled over, she assessed the situation, she removed the scissors from the student, all the while while maintaining a calm environment on the bus. Thank you for your calm under pressure and for the investment that you have and for your quick actions. Our Professional of the Nine Weeks is Lynn Torres. Her supervisor is Joe Gillen. Ms. Torres is a Behavior and Counseling Coordinator in Education Services, and this was said about her. If you were to ask employees in the district one team member who they would like to have with them when confronting a difficult situation, their answer would overwhelmingly be Lynn Torres. Her ability to build relationships, diagnose needs, and then fulfill them is truly remarkable. Not only does she see and meet students' needs, she works with families and caregivers to ensure that expectations are reinforced at home and school. She is a jewel. Congratulations. And next, we have our Paraprofessional of the Nine Weeks, and that is Pam McLamore, and she is a secretary at Frenow Elementary School, where the principal and her supervisor is Lori Parker, and this was said about Pam. She provides excellent customer service and is a model for other campuses. She is efficient, organized, and her record-keeping is impeccable. She's friendly, always willing to help, in looking for ways to streamline and be more efficient. Teachers know if they ask Pam for something, it will be done. Congratulations. And next, we're gonna transition into our CFB Way.
Yes, and so, every month, we'd like to showcase some student artwork, and so tonight, if you get a chance, you can look at some of Kent's artwork that's from Kent Elementary, so hope you just take a chance and see the wonderful work our students are doing. At this time, we want to recognize a few individuals that took action to help the situation at RL Turner whenever Coach Evans was in need, and he is here with us today, standing proud because of the work and the dedication and the fast response of several of our people. So, Ms. Parnell?
And as Dr. Chapman mentioned, I'm gonna read just a little bit about what happened that evening. We're proud to recognize and honor four Turner High School employees for demonstrating the CFB Way and demonstrating that truly together we can be the exception. In early December, RL Turner wrestling coach Robert Evans and his students had just completed practice. Coach Evans was talking to students about an upcoming event when he suddenly blacked out. His heart had stopped, and he was experiencing cardiac arrest. Fortunately, Coach Evans was surrounded by wonderful people who took lifesaving actions to assist him while waiting on paramedics, and that's who we would like to recognize tonight. This is what they did. Basketball coach Eric Costa quickly got the AED, and basketball coach Josh Ostrich, I'm sorry, performed CPR. Simultaneously, counselor Kim Rangel and coach Joel Montgomery gathered students and parents and provided necessary emotional support, who were all there witnessing the event. These Turner staff members have been rightfully named Evans Angels. We want to publicly thank them for the heroic efforts they provided that night to save the life of a fellow coworker and their friend. So, if you four would please come forward, we'd like to get a group picture this time. And we have Coach Evans with us too, so we want him to come forward. That night, our first responders were so critical to helping, and we have several of them here with us tonight as well, and would like to ask, they have a little something to give, as they come up, and we like to get a group picture with them. Fire Chief Greg Sawme is here, as well as some others.
Well, hello, my name is Greg Sawme, and I'm the fire chief at Carrollton Fire Rescue, and I wanted to give you a few statistics. Across the country, the survival rate of cardiac arrest is 12%. If someone performs CPR, just pumping on the chest prior to our arrival, we can increase that rate to 40%. If an AED is applied and a shock delivered prior to our arrival, we can exceed 60%, and that's why we are so proud and appreciative of Joshua and Eric for their decisive actions in recognizing that Robert was in trouble, performing CPR, applying an AED with... performing CPR, applying an AED, which delivered a shock that gave our guys the best chance possible to save Robert's life. And for that, we would like to recognize them on behalf of Carrollton Fire Rescue for their decisive and quick actions that resulted in the saving of a life.
And we have one more tonight that we would like to recognize under CFB way. And we want to congratulate Ms. Carla Hardaway from Creekview High School. She's the drill team director, and she has been selected as the 2019 Texas Association for Health, Physical Education, Recreation, and Dance Educator of the Year. She's also, but that's not all, she was also named the Texas Dance Educator Association's Dance Educator for 2020. Her principal is here, that's Principal Joe Lapuma, and we want to congratulate Carla. And that concludes our recognitions. Thank you.
Are there any PTA people here tonight?
Yes.
There she is.
I can't beat that. That's wonderful.
Did you bring a fire truck?
No. Dr. Chapman, members of the school board, my name is Delia Gonzalez, and I serve as the secretary for CFB Council PTA. I would like to update you as to the efforts of Council PTA over the past few months. Together with the district, Council PTA is hosting our next and last parent education initiative for this school year called Parent University. Beginning the week of February 27th, our committee will begin releasing 20-minute online presentations covering topics relevant for today's families. We've already begun filming these presentations, and we're looking forward to releasing these helpful resources. Be on the lookout soon for Parent Square info on how to access the presentations. Our next Council PTA delegate meeting is taking place on March 23rd at 6:30 PM in the ESDC Texas Room. Along with holding our Council PTA elections, we'll also get to hear from Malcolm Mulroni with the bond update and from Dr. Chapman. Our delegate meetings are open to all who wish to attend. We invite you all to join us for our upcoming Texas PTA Life Member Award and Membership Award Ceremony, April 30th at 6:30 PM at Turner High School. We will honor all those receiving a Texas PTA Life Member Award, as well as recognize our local PTAs for their membership awards that they've earned this year from Texas PTA. Everyone is invited, and we hope to see you there. And of course, we can't leave here today without talking about membership. I'm thrilled to announce that our total PTA memberships district-wide has broken 6,000 members for the first time since the year 2011. We currently have 6,107 PTA members in our district, which is just 241 memberships short of our goal for this school year. Council PTA would like to recognize and applaud the efforts of our local membership chairs and leaders who have had direct hand in helping us achieve the highest membership number we've seen in eight years. If you haven't joined one of our 36 PTAs across the district, it's not too late. You can join many of our PTAs online at joinpta.org. And lastly, to those of you who have been engaging with our PTAs on their social platforms, thank you. It's a wonderful way to see more about the events and activities at all of our campuses to help meet our mutual goal of high achievement for each student. Thank you again for your continued support of PTA.
So, thank you, Dr. Chapman. We love our student recognition opportunities. Thank you for introducing the two Turner students that we got to recognize tonight. Thank you to their parents and to the students for all your hard work. Campus team members and principals, thank you for bringing your teacher of the nine weeks and letting us meet and hear more about them. I hope that you understand how much we can't do it without y'all. And also, our staff members, and they seem to be the most excited when they got up here, but can't do it without the staff that keeps everything going. CFB way, wow, Dr. Chapman. Thank you to our Turner team. You know, it's not just about saving lives, but that makes it extra wonderful. And thank you to our Carrollton Fire Department for being here tonight and helping us recognize and celebrate the happy way things turned out. And also, thank you to Ms. Hardaway. I think that teaching girls how to respect themselves and dance and enjoy school even more, the fine arts and athletics, is what makes our kids want to come to school. So, we'll take a brief recess until it's 7:24, so we'll come back at 7:35. Thank y'all. This meeting of the Carrollton Farmers Branches Board of Trustees is called back to order. The next item on the agenda is number three, Audience for Guests. Ms. Cassinon, do we have any Audience for Guests?
No, ma'am.
There are no speakers for tonight's meeting, then. So, our item number four is Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda is a mechanism that the board uses to approve a number of routine items together with a single vote. In compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the public notice for this meeting includes a list of all consent agenda items, and the board has been provided ample information about these items in advance. Prior to any action taken on the consent agenda, board members may request withdrawal of individual items for clarification or discussion. Board members, are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda at this time? So, hearing none and seeing none, board members, is there any action anybody wants to take? Mr. Matthews.
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
We have a motion by Mr. Matthews, a second by Ms. Derrick. All those in favor? So that is six in favor, and there should be zero opposed. So, now we're on item number, agenda item number five, Non-Action Items for Discussion and Consideration. 5A Report on December EOC. Ms. Parker?
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Chapman and members of the board. Tonight, we are presenting information related to the 2019 December STAR End-of-Course Test Results that we received three weeks ago on January the 15th. With regard to the STAR End-of-Course Test, there are actually five tests our students take. They are in the area of algebra, biology, English 1, English 2, and US History. Now, once a student has completed two semesters of coursework in any one of these content areas, students take the end-of-course state assessment. And this typically takes place at the end of our school year, in the month of April or May. The following school year, students have three opportunities to reassess. The first one occurs during June. It's a time period where we have the fewest number of retesters that have come back to test during the last week of June. Most of our retesters will have their first opportunity to reassess in December, and then the third opportunity will occur in April alongside those that are taking the test for the first time. Now, with regard to our algebra and of course test results, we can see here on the far left that 86% of our students met the passing standard at the end of last year. We then had a slight increase with our cumulative average up to 87% based on our June test results, and we're currently sitting at 90% passing rate in cumulative scores for algebra EOCs. Looking specifically at our December test results, we can see that just slightly over 200 students took this test in December. And we can also see that slightly, over 90% of the students were taking the test as a retester. Nearly 10% were taking the test for the very first time. With regard to biology, the passing rate was at 87% at the end of last year and is currently at 91%. With regard to the number of test takers in December, we can see almost 200 students, actually 197 students, took the test. And once again, a large majority, nearly 90% of the kids that were taking it were retesters. Looking to English 1, English 1, we can see that our current cumulative scores is sitting at a 67%. We can see here that the scores has the largest gain out of all of our EOC test takers. There's an actual gain of nine percentage points from the last administration that many of them took in the spring. Slightly over 700 students took this test in December, and we can see here that in the area of English 1, much like on the next test, English 2, a large majority, almost all of the students are taking this as a retest during these two administrations, the ones in June as well as those in December. English 2, we can see that there's a five percentage point gain between the end of last year and the December results here for English 2. Prior to this, English 2 is a test that most students take during their sophomore year. The other tests, algebra, biology, and English 1 are commonly tested during 9th grade. Slightly over 500 students, or 543 I should say, took this test in December. And once again, much like English 1, we can see that 96, excuse me, 96% of the students tested as a retester. Last is the US History and of course Test. This test is commonly given during the 11th grade year, and we can see that our current overall cumulative average is sitting at a 94% for US History. This test actually is the one that has the fewest number of retesters. Less than 100 students took this test in December, and we can see it also had the largest number of students taking it for the first time during December. This next slide shows the information that I've already presented to you, but you're able to see it across, looking at all five of the test results. So, looking comprehensively across the board, algebra had a four percentage point gain. Biology also had a four percent point gain. English 1, as mentioned, 9% gain from spring to currently into December. English 2, a five percentage point gain, and US History has a two percentage point gain. Looking ahead to support our retesters here in the spring, is, coming up is a STAR State Interim. This is an interim test that's provided by TEA to districts across the state. It is an online test, and all of our campuses with students in grades 3 through 8, as well as those that are taking an end-of-course test, are going to have an opportunity to take this interim assessment provided by the state free of charge between February the 18th and March the 6th. We also, of course, have student tutoring opportunities on campus, curriculum retester resources made available for those students that are having to take a look at the test for a second or a third time. We have specialist instructional coaches supporting the students at their home campuses. And one of the things that we can attribute some of the instrumental changes and gains that we have had is this new feature that is provided by the state to be able to actually review shoulder-to-shoulder the student's testing history. The state has a secure site for parents and teachers and students to be able to access the state assessment scores for their child. This is what the portal looks like when a parent or a teacher or student were to go to log in. It's very simple. You simply need to have an access code that is provided to the students. This access code is the same access code the student's going to have the entire time that they're here in the state of Texas. It doesn't change every year. It's the same six-digit alphanumeric code, and the student's date of birth. Once you log in, you can see the incomplete assessment history for the student. So I've provided a slide here of a student that actually tested back in December, and we can see that the student took, was obviously a 9th grader, who took algebra, biology, and English 1 during the spring administration, met grade level on two of them, but did not meet grade level in the area of algebra. So the student sat for the test in December, and we can see earned a passing score of approaches grade level in December. Now, not only do we have a complete testing history available electronically, but as you can see on the far left-hand side, that tab says Test History, the screen I just showed you. You can also see their test results and see how they compare to other students at their campus across the district and the state. That's interesting information, but if we're a student, or a parent, or a teacher, or a coach, we really want to dive down and take a look at, how did the student respond on the test? Which questions did they get right, and which questions do they need to take time to explore? Those are available under their Detailed Results tab, and it goes one step further. You can actually click either on the previous one, where you can see the item number. It's hyperlinked, so that if you were to click on the number one, it would take you to the test question that was actually administered to the student during the spring. Or you can click on the tab and go through each of the test questions, and begin to really work on those areas of improvement that a student might need to be more successful on their next test. The state has also provided behind this the opportunity to understand the rationale. Why were these questions incorrect? So they're able to work on any misconceptions that a student might have had. And also, why was, in this particular case, why was D the correct response and the reasonings behind it, to help with the dialogue? One of the things to share is that we've had, we have evidence that not only our students and parents and our staff are using this. Last year, just before TEA rolled this out, we sent this notification to Parent Square across the district, saying that this was actually coming a week before the test results were released in June. Then we followed up again with it, saying the test results are here. Please, we encourage you to go onto this website, take a look at your student scores, have conversations, and get them ready for the next school year. And we'll continue to do this after every administration. We have evidence that we're being successful, and the fact that in November, we received a phone call from TEA wanting to know what we're doing here in Carrollton Farmers Branch, because we were one of the top seven districts in the state with similar demographics like our own that was actually using this, and it was noted to receive a phone call by TEA. And that's a good phone call to get from TEA to talk about what are the best practices and how are you sharing this information across your campuses? And that concludes the information tonight on our December STAR EOC test scores.
Thank you, Ms. Parker. So, board members, questions? I see we have some on my right. Go for it, ladies.
I just have a quick question, Dr. Parker. The login that you showed, does that also include STAR results for parents, not just EOC?
That is correct. It includes not only the STAR test results, but if your child is an English language learner, it also shows their TELPASS scores as well. It's a complete assessment history for any test that a child took in the state of Texas for the state of Texas.
And it is interesting drilling down to the questions, some of which I can't answer. But, so back on the data, it was quick, so it was fast, and so bear with me to get this out. The retest percentage, or the reassessment percentage, some of those numbers sound really high to me. Is there a comparison to how we compare, are those normal retest percentage numbers, or how do y'all use that to further changes, or what do we need to do to make sure these students are happy, you know, on the first time? I don't know what's normal or not normal.
Sure. So, in terms of retesting, oftentimes, the passing standard approaches grade level or higher typically sits between 25% and 50% of students meet the passing standard. What we're showing you here is our overall district's cumulative scores. If we were to look at all those students that were taking the test at the end of 2019, these are the kids that are still in our classrooms. In order to graduate, in general, they're going to need to pass the test. So this gives us an indicator where we are in the grand scheme of things. Looking at specifically the numbers, once again, the passing standard is usually roughly around 25% to 50% of students are successful during their first retest.
And that's statewide? I mean, that's what the normal is?
Typically, yes.
Are there changes that we have to make or that we should be looking, similar to what we had looked at from the curriculum data dive before at a work study, you know, trying to identify those problems and changes made in the curriculum or whatever we're doing?
Yes.
You know, does that data, how do y'all use that?
That does. That guides some of the discussions and the decisions that are made by the curriculum team in terms of the areas that they're going to focus in, in terms of support. team in terms of the areas that they're going to focus in in terms of support and the resources, but also in areas where they analyze and take a look at essential standards and reporting categories. You know, if it was just one or two questions, that's not going to be something where we're going to call an essential standard, it's not high stakes. We're going to really focus on the ones that most of our students might have some misconceptions or need some work on. So they use that information to kind of drill down as to areas for improvement to be able to either provide it in their own formative assessments, put together some resources to support the students and the staff.
Okay. Board members, any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Parker.
Thank you.
We're now on item five, the demographic report from Templeton. Ms. Hellman?
We're excited this evening. Thank you. We're excited this evening to have Templeton Demographics here with us this evening. Templeton is a school demographic consulting firm based in South Lake. Templeton assists more than eighty Texas school districts annually with demographics and planning. Bob Templeton has more than twenty years' experience working with school districts, providing enrollment forecasts and attendance zone planning. Tonight, Mr. Templeton will review the results from the demographic study, which provides a ten-year look at CFB ISD enrollment projections. So Mr. Templeton?
Thank you. Good evening, Board President, members of the Board, Dr. Chapman. It is my pleasure to be with you this evening. As was mentioned, we will just do a overview. This is our kind of high-level summary of our research that we completed this past fall. I can tell you that we are continuing to forecast enrollment growth. Just a quick look at Slide Two, you'll notice that the enrollment patterns over the last five years. No doubt, you have seen a little bit of a decline in enrollment. The biggest factor that's contributing to that decline in enrollment is the impact of charter school expansions across the DFW region. This is a trend that has kind of surfaced over the last five to ten years, and it is spreading across the DFW region. And unfortunately, I do not see it going away. I'm only seeing it continue to expand. When we look specifically, you can notice in 2016, that's when the enrollment kind of bottomed out at about twenty-five thousand, two-hundred-and-seventy-six. That negative decline of about five-hundred-and-twenty was the direct result of a charter school that opened in this area. And so we do track the charter schools very closely. Unfortunately, it is very challenging because the information that we get from TEA is very vague in the locations where the charters that they're approving are going to locate. I'll touch a little bit more on the charter impact on subsequent slides. Just diving a little bit deeper into your enrollment history, this top part of this table is your enrollment by grade level. I like to highlight the highest two grades. The yellow is the largest grade per year, and the green is the second-largest grade per year. You'll notice that the ninth grade has been the largest or the second-largest grade for the last several years. It's not unusual for the ninth grade to be one of the largest grades. That is associated with those ninth graders that don't quite get enough credits to become sophomores. So that number kind of swells up there at ninth grade. And that is a phenomenon that we see at virtually all high schools. It is not a Carrollton Farmers Branch issue related to your high schools. It's truly when those ninth graders get up into high school, some of them will take a little bit longer to get enough credits. You'll notice that by seeing the relationship between ninth and tenth grade. The tenth grade cohort is typically averaging out to be about point-eight-seven students per grade level change from ninth to tenth. That middle table there, the bottom table there, is the cohort pattern change. We use cohorts to study the history patterns. We also then will build in some of the cohort patterns into our enrollment projections. You can see some very consistent patterns as they relate to high school. That ninth grade cohort pattern averages out to be about one-point-one-seven. And then you'll see the tenth, eleventh, and twelfth grades, those that are less than one, point-eight, point-nine-nine in eleventh, and point-eight-six at twelfth grade. But it averages out across those high school grades at about point-nine-seven cohort change at the high school grade. So we will use that pattern going forward with our high school projections. There again, this pattern is very consistent with what we see with most high schools that we work with. Some could be a little bit lower, some could be a little bit higher, but this is in line with what we see. I want to point out a couple of other cohorts that are very unusual. The sixth grade cohort, you'll notice, is point-nine-zero-five. And that's the grade level that is experiencing the most enrollment decline from fifth to sixth grade. So when you look at last year's fifth grade class, it was one-thousand-nine-hundred-and-sixty-seven, which resulted in this year's sixth grade class of one-thousand-seven-hundred-and-eighty. That is also an indicator of the charter pull. So some of the charters in the area start at sixth grade, so then they are pulling kids at sixth grade. We also saw it a few years ago in the drop in the kindergarten cohort. So that kindergarten cohort dropped back in 2016 and 2017. Some of the charters are opening K-two, and then they add a grade level per year, and some will start with sixth and add a grade level per year. But I highlighted the sixth grade cohort as being a little low. Your seventh grade cohort this year actually jumped up a little bit. Some of that could be charter return. We were starting to see amongst our DFW clients that some parents will go into the charter experience with a little bit of rose-colored glasses about what they think the experience is going to be, but then they come right back because they realize it's not any, it's not as good as what they had been led to believe. Overall, the DFW economy continues to be one of the strongest economies in the country for job growth. I do not see that changing in the near term. We've got a tremendous amount of job growth that is in its middle stages. The relocation of major corporations to the DFW region. We're seeing a tremendous surge in the professional services industries related to insurance, banking, financial, Charles Schwab, TD Ameritrade. And so the north part of the metroplex is where we see a tremendous amount of that job growth, over in the Plano-Frisco side as well as the North Terrence side. So you're kind of sitting right in the middle between where this major job growth is taking place. But we consistently, for the last three years, have been in the top two or three cities in the country for job growth, at about a hundred thousand-plus jobs annually. The unemployment rates are both good news and bad news. These are fifty-year-low unemployment rates. And these are numbers from September, but the December numbers are just as low, are just as in that two-to-three percent range. Anytime you're below four percent, you're virtually fully employed, and it becomes a real challenge to fill service jobs. Primarily, the service industry suffers the most when we see unemployment rates this low. And for school districts, it can be filling food service, janitorial, grounds, even substitute teachers can be very hard to fill when the unemployment rates are below four percent. DFW is at three-point-one, Carrollton's two-point-eight, Farmers Branch, three-point-one. And when I looked at the December numbers, they're just as low, not much of a change at all related to the unemployment rates. The housing market across the DFW region is still producing about thirty-three to thirty-four thousand new homes per year. Now, we'll take a look at the Carrollton Farmers Branch portion of that. But overall, the housing market is still considered a very hot, very strong housing market. We're continuing to see escalation in home values and home prices, which is also both good news and bad news. It's good news if you're a seller. It's bad news if you're a buyer. And it can be lifting your total appraised value, so you're probably seeing your total appraised value climbing a little bit because of the increase in values of just your single-family homes. And so back in 2005 and '06, when we saw the housing crash, that really was a drag on property values. But now we've got the opposite of that, and we've got property values really floating up. Overall, just some demographic snapshot information. The total population estimated for Carrollton Farmers Branch, total population, is up over two-hundred-and-six thousand. I don't know if you think about that, but that makes you really a pretty large city if you were to consider just the population within the Carrollton Farmers Branch School District. It's up twenty-three-point-five percent from the 2010 census. The below-nineteen population also up about twenty-four percent, up to fifty-four thousand, so we're still a young community in this area. Median household income has risen about twenty-one percent, and the number of households is up about twenty-one percent to eighty-three thousand, five-hundred-and-eleven. We do look at home sales as well as new home construction. Year-to-date, these were back from the fall. Four-point-one percent increase in the number of sales as of September of nineteen. Average price is up about a point-eight of a percent. The median price has leveled off at about two-hundred-and-ninety thousand. Number of listings up about five-point-four. And the inventory is at a two-point-two-month supply, which is still very tight. Typically, that inventory threshold is a little bit higher than that. So we still have a very tight housing market related to listings of homes. This is a graph going back to 2010. The blue bar represents existing home sales. The green bar represents new home sales. And then the yellow portion of this bar is foreclosures, and the red is REO, which is distressed or bank-owned property sales. Both of the yellow and the red could really be classified as distressed property sales. The good news is you can see what's happened since 2010. The distressed property sales have almost gone away, and that is also an indication of a very healthy, very hot housing market. Bottom line is, when families are stressed for either because of medical or job loss or other challenges, they can sell their homes very quickly, avoiding foreclosure and avoiding the bank-owned forced-to-sales. Here's a look at the average price for a new home within Carrollton Farmers Branch. You'll notice back in 2010, the average price for a new home was three-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand. And year-to-date, as of when we did the study back in the fall, it was four-hundred-and-ninety-four thousand. There again, that's kind of good news, bad news. It can be challenging for younger families to afford a new home in your school district. The existing home prices have gone from a hundred-and-eighty-six thousand to over three-hundred-and-eleven thousand. So there again, the existing home is benefiting from the surge in the new home price. They're kind of following suit, and you are seeing that increase to over three-hundred-and-eleven thousand for an existing home sale. Now, we're going to get into some of the new housing areas that we're tracking. These green shaded areas are active subdivisions that are building single-family homes, and the yellow are where we're tracking some futures. You'll notice that, for the most part, the district would be what I would consider about ninety percent built out. So you truly are nearing the end of your strong growth. We've got about six-hundred-and-twenty lots to build on. There's about seven-hundred-and-sixty future lots. And of those futures, groundwork is underway on about six-hundred-and-forty lots that will be delivered shortly. And you can see a majority of that is in the Landry Zone. We've got a little bit in La Vila. And then there's a little bit in Good. That's on the single-family side of the housing picture. On the multifamily side of the housing picture, we've got about eighteen-hundred and ten units that are under construction within the district, about eight-hundred-and-twenty future units that are in the planning stages. Of those, there's about an eighty-six unit complex that is age-restricted. We'd like to report that, just so you'll know, when you hear about an apartment complex somewhere, you'll be able to know that, oh, it's age-restricted, so it'll have a zero impact on students to the school district. You can see the purple shaded areas, those are the multifamily complexes that are under construction. And there again, it's a majority in Landry and a majority, and there's some in La Valita. Am I getting that right? La Valita. There is some future stuff still to happen, and I suspect we could see some additional as we go further down the road, a few years down the road. But it's very difficult to take raw land and turn it into future multifamily. If it's not already zoned multifamily, it can be real challenging for a developer to get land rezoned to multifamily because there's typically a lot of opposition to that. Some of the details on this slide, we've listed out the apartment complexes, the number of units, their status, and we've listed the elementary zone that they're located in. Keep in mind, a majority of these that are under construction are what we would classify as lifestyle or a Class A apartment complex, which means that the yields will likely be less than point-two students per unit, not high-yielding multifamily. But regardless, when you've got twenty-six hundred units, even with a point-two, it will still generate a couple of hundred kids. Now, I'm going to spend some additional time a little later on about the multifamily picture in your school district. You are a majority of our clients. We work with about thirty school districts in the DFW region. We also work with Richardson, Plano, Lewisville. We work with many of your neighbors around your school district. But you do have a little bit higher percentage of students in multifamily than what we would see in a Keller or in some of the other districts. But I'll touch on that in just a few slides. Some of the details, here's your largest, most active subdivision. It's Mercer Crossing. It's a total of about one-thousand-sixty-seven total lots. It does include some townhome and some condos. There's about three-hundred-and-seventy-eight future lots that have yet to be delivered. But it is in its early stages. There's about a hundred-and-fifty-three homes that were under construction during this past fall, and there's streets paving on an additional three-hundred lots that are likely, I think they've just delivered. We estimate that they're going to build about two-hundred to maybe two-hundred-and-fifty homes a year would be the maximum number that we think that Mercer Crossing would generate. The price point of these homes is starting at about four-hundred-and-thirty thousand. Now, that yield is rather low right now, I think because it's in the early stages of this development. I do expect that yield to go up as we get more homes occupied. Next, we're moving into the La Valita Elementary Zone, Silver Leaf Estates, ninety-five total lots. About six homes were under construction this past fall. There's fifty-five vacant developed lots, building about ten homes per year. Those homes are a little bit more expensive. They're starting at four-eighty. The current yield is about point-two-five-eight students per house. I do expect this would also go up just a little bit as we get more homes occupied. Just to the south of six-thirty-five, we've got terraces at Los Colinas, two-hundred-and-six total lots, also about nine occupied this past fall, twenty-nine homes under construction. We estimate that they're starting about thirty-six homes in the last twelve months, so they could do another thirty to forty homes this next year. That price range is starting at four-twenty. We did not geocode any students, but I suspect now there probably are some students that live in that neighborhood. Next, we've got the Legends Crossings, which is two-hundred-and-fifty-one future lots. The preliminary groundwork is underway. Home building timeline is on hold until all the requirements are met with Irving Planning and Zoning. So I don't expect it'll hold them up too long, but it's slightly been delayed because of some requirement issues that they needed to get fulfilled. That price range, you'll notice, is a little bit lower, starting at about two-fifty. It's hard to believe, but two-fifty is some of the lowest price point that we see, you know? And it wasn't that long ago that two-hundred-and-fifty was a significant home. But now, two-hundred-and-fifty is at that entry-level spot. The Creek Side at Thomas Park, ninety-two future lots. The final plat was approved in May of 2019. The plan was under review with the city this past fall. Now, this is a look at our housing forecast. So the blue bar represents the new housing, starting in 2015. And then the 2019-20 year, we saw about two-hundred-and-thirty-five. I think what I would say on this graph, the light blue part of this graph, I think you're going to see about a thousand homes built in the next five years. Now, we may see it to be about three-hundred, actually. Now, I'm kind of leaning towards 2021, 2020, 2021 school year. It could actually get over two-fifty with what we're seeing happening in Mercer. But over that span, there's truly just not enough VDL and future lots for us to see much more than a thousand new homes over the next five-year period. And this is just single-family. Now, here's a look at, we ge-coded your students to their addresses so that we could see the yields of students per house. And every one of those dots truly represents a student in the district to their address. We've got about twelve-thousand-seven-hundred-and-eighty-five students. Roughly fifty percent of the district's population enrollment resides within the Carrollton City limits. And about thirty-nine-hundred-and-forty-six students, or about fifteen percent, reside within the city of Farmers Branch. We thought- We thought you might want to just kind of see the differences between the two major cities. The district yield for a single-family across the district is about .405. And the district yield for multifamily averages out to be about .238. Now, this is a map of your multifamily apartment complexes. Within Carrollton Farmers Branch, there's roughly 10,515 students that are residing in about 44,175 multifamily units. Now, roughly, 41% of your total student population reside in multifamily. 41%. To give you a comparison, Richardson ISD, we work with Richardson ISD. They're the highest of all of our clients, and they're at about 48%. 48% of their students. And your neighbor to the north, Plano, just to give you another little comparison, Plano is about 26%. Most of our clients are less than 20%. So you are kind of in a, in a higher-than-most that we see in the DFW region. Now, what I, what I would caution about that is, so, you know, 41% of your population is in multifamily. Multifamily is influenced by the rent rates. And when rent rates go up, that tends to spike some mobility. And so, we really want to watch what happens with the multifamily, because just a change of about 3% to 4% in occupancy in multifamily can cause the enrollment to swing up and down. Now, right now, because you have so many units within Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD, that's actually not a, so some of that mobility is just going to happen within the district. It's not going to cause them to leave the district. Versus, in some of our clients that don't have a lot of multifamily options, when the rates go up, they leave. They leave the district because they have to. So here, it appears to me that there's enough of options that likely the mobility will be, hopefully, within Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD. Now, those red units, and you can see, you've got, you know, quite a few of those red units that are yielding more than .75 students per unit. Now, they're heaviest concentrated in the middle of the district. So the central part of your school district has the highest concentration of the highest-yielding apartment complexes. And then, you've got one in Landry, and you've got one in Freeman. But quite honestly, it's the orange and the red that I would really consider higher-yielding apartment complexes. The green, those smaller units, so those smaller circles are yielding less than .25 students per unit. The reality is, most of those green are your newer apartment complexes, and most of your orange and red are the ones that are a little bit older. So it does also tie to age of the complexes. We've seen in HEB School District that when they reach a certain age, it's not uncommon for them to be torn down. And we see a new product come back up. And so, a lot of times, then, that will cause a huge displacement, because there's trying to seek affordable housing, when a Class A might replace a affordable complex. Now, I want to touch on the charter school. We have mapped the charter schools that are all across the DFW region, but we kind of zoomed in to the Carrollton Farmers Branch School District. And those stars represent the charters that are in and around Carrollton Farmers Branch. There are 14 active charter campuses within or near Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD. We did see one open this past fall, the Life School Carrollton, that opened in 2019 this past fall. In 2018-19, a year ago, there were about 6,420 students, which was an increase of about 300 students from two years ago. We do our full update on the charter enrollment in March and April. That's because we're getting the letters from TEA. We've also learned that many of the charters don't make their decisions on where they're going to locate until the spring, to try to anticipate the fall enrollment. Now, what we know about certain types of charters, there are IDEA. IDEA Charter is the most expanding charter in the state of Texas right now, and it has just come into the DFW region this past year. It's been heaviest on the Fort Worth side. They open their campuses in the Fort Worth School District and in the Byrdville School District. They plan to open nearly a dozen campuses in the Dallas-Fort Worth region. Right now, we have not identified any IDEA campuses in or around Carrollton Farmers Branch. The one thing that will be a positive for you about IDEA is, they like to build new buildings. They do not go into an old grocery store, or an old church, or an old retail center. They will go into a new building. They'll build a new building. It's going to be hard for them to do that in Carrollton Farmers Branch, because of the cost of the land, and it's just not as available. So we do see them around the fringes a little more than we'll see in your school district. But we will be watching. And when we see a new charter come in, if it comes in within your district, we automatically update. We don't wait for the next year to do an update on the projection. So I wanted to mention that. This is what we know right now. And as we finalize our charter information, then we can make adjustments as they come out. I'm just putting that little caution note. I'm not seeing anything right now that's imminent, but we could certainly discover something within the next two months. One of the other pieces of data that we look at is, and it kind of ties back to mobility. We compared this year's student file, this year's student IDs, to last year's student IDs. We're primarily looking at this year's first through 12th graders, comparing them to last year's kindergarten through 11th graders. We are looking for new student IDs. This year, we had 3,182 new student IDs. We don't count the kindergartners, because technically, they're all new students. And then, for the levers, we're doing the opposite. We're looking for missing IDs from this year's student file compared to last year. So the blue bar is newcomers, and the red bar is levers in those grade levels. You'll notice that last year's difference between newcomers and levers was a negative 592. This year's difference was a negative 861. You'll notice, we did have a few more newcomers to the district, which would have been likely been because of new households to the district, but our levers have gone up this year. They jumped up to about 4,051. There again, it's not, all districts have levers. You'd like for those levers and newcomers to be pretty close together. Now, the reason that you still have enrollment growth, even despite the newcomer-lever difference, is the difference between kindergarten and 12th grade. Right now, your kindergarten class is still about 500 students larger than your 12th-grade class. So we've got some natural growth, just from rolling up, you know, the kindergarten class, the new kindergarten class versus a small 12th-grade class. So we've got some roll-up growth, just from the new, the larger kindergarten classes versus the 12th-grade classes. We also look at birth rate data. Birth rate data gives us a guide for how we forecast kindergarten. We only have three years of help when it comes to the birth rate data. Now, we collect the birth rate data going all the way back to 2006. We compare it to the five-year lagging kindergarten class, to give us a ratio of birth to kindergarten. You can see that ratio has been pretty consistent, going all the way back to 2006. For many years, it was close to .8. That's the ratio of birth to kindergarten. But then, starting in about 2016, that's when the ratio dropped to .737. There again, that is also a charter impact. So when the charters start pulling kindergarten kids, that's what causes the ratio to drop. Now, you'll notice it dropped again in 2017 to about .695. But then, last year, the ratio was .737. This year, it was .737. So we have used .737 as the birth-to-kindergarten ratio, to give us a guide for kindergarten for the next three years. Now, how much of that ratio could go up? Certainly, what we are seeing from some of the surrounding school districts, your ability to market and mail out information, and really go after the pre-K and kindergarten, all that you can do to try to get information in front of them and get them to your schools, could cause that ratio to go up just a little bit. Now, here's a look at the projections. So this year, this past October, this past fall, the enrollment was about 25,625, which was virtually flat, about 27 kids more than the previous year. You'll notice that next year, we're forecasting it to grow to about 25,790. Over the next five years, we're forecasting that your enrollment could grow to 26,441. So there's a couple of big surges in there. And then, you'll notice, when we get to about 2025, there's a little bit of a drop. That's when we have a large 12th-grade class starting to graduate. And we're starting to see some of those larger classes kind of work their way up through. Now, I'm going to go through the campus pages, then we can go back and have some time for question and discussions. Now, keep in mind, we're showing the capacity. And then, we're also showing you, when the campus exceeds capacity, that's when it turns yellow. So you do have two campuses. One of those is La Valita. It's at about 904 this past fall. It gets to over 1,000 students by 2021. And then Freeman is growing to about 874, 885. Landry, it's a little bit lower in the enrollment, at about 256, but you'll notice, it's got steady growth, and it gets to about 600 students as early as 2027. So overall, the elementary totals, about 12,298 this past fall. It gets to over 13,250 students by 2023, which is just four years away. At the secondary level, at your middle schools, we've got about 5,483 students at your middle school campuses this past fall. Now, you'll notice, there's a couple of years of drops in there. That sixth-grade cohort that I mentioned, that's causing a little bit of a drag on the sixth grade, that's what's causing these numbers to kind of drop down, is because we're losing some kids at sixth graders, plus we've got some smaller class sizes that are coming. So the middle schools are going to drop down to about 4,900, and then, they're going to start their return, and they could get to about 5,600 by 2027. I'll point out that Bush Middle School, it is your middle school that is growing. So it's having consistent growth, up to about 900 students by 2024. And it could eclipse 1,000 students, possibly as early as 2025, but could be 2026, that it'll reach 1,000 students. At your high schools, you've got Smith High School, which gets to almost 2,100 students in 2021. And then, you've got Creekview High School, that gets to about 1,967 students by 2024. So overall, your total high school number could peak at about 7,446 students, and then start to trail off just a little bit. In summary, the Carrollton Farmers Branch School District will continue to experience slight enrollment growth due to large incoming kindergarten classes. Plus, we've got about 1,000 single-family homes, and about 2,600 multifamily units that we'll be adding to the school district. We are forecasting that you could build about 180 to 200 single-family homes for the next three to five years. That'll take care of that 1,000 single-family lots that we're tracking. And then, the 2024-25 enrollment projection calls for the enrollment to be 26,400. And in 10 years, your enrollment could be 26,713. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Board members?
Ms. Derrick.
I have one back at the beginning, on the first page. Looking at last year's numbers, the 2018-2019, did we have any explanation for the growth of 301 students?
Well, I do think some of that, when I look at the, some of the cohort patterns, we had a really strong pre-K. And, so the pre-K was surging a little bit at that time. Your also kindergarten was surging, so it was some of those younger grade levels that were surging, that definitely contributed to that. Because you can see kindergarten went from 1,834, so it grew almost 200 of that 300.
Okay. Do we know if that was related to, like, programming? Have we linked to that?
Well, you know, on the kindergarten side, it goes back to the birth rate. So you can see, you know, we had those ratios that we're tracking. So there was a, it takes five years, when you see a surge in births, it's five years before you realize that in kindergarten.
Okay. Thank you.
Board members, any other questions?
It's not really a question, I guess, just a statement for, you know, Dr. Chapman and staff, of course. My heart hurts to see that many students leaving CFB. And then, I think we need to continue to focus on the good things happening in our middle schools, and figure out what we can do to make sure the sixth grader, you know, the fifth graders are staying in and continuing on to these great places. I mean, where we can offer them so much better opportunities than the charter schools. We have, we've got to talk about it. We got to, we got to spread the message.
Ms. Ramos.
Mr. Templeton, a question you brought up on slide number 18, with regards to charter schools. And you mentioned Life, I think you said Life is the one that you said that you don't see any kind of...
That was the latest one that opened.
Idea.
Oh, Idea, yes.
That you don't see any immediate impact, but that could change in the next couple of months, based on land. Did you, in your projections, did you come up with any future or other charter schools that might affect?
I did not.
You did not?
No.
Okay.
But typically, with our clients, we go with what we know at the time. And so, but then, most of our clients, we have an ongoing relationship with them. And then, as soon as we get word of one, then we, we build it in, and we send the district the new projections.
Okay. So it's kind of a moving target.
It is a little bit of that. You know, Duncan, many of your neighbors to the south, well, they're not neighbors, school districts to the south, Duncanville, Grand Prairie, Cedar Hill, they've been in this charter battle for several years. And unfortunately, what happens is, there's, there's two, there's, there's two levels of charters, in my opinion. There are KIP, Harmonies, Ideas, International Leadership of Texas. They are here to stay, and they're not going away. Then, there are some of the others that are more new, newer and smaller, and they'll come and they'll go. They don't, they don't last, and then they close. And then, unfortunately, some other charter picks up that, you know, program, and then you see, so it's a revolving door of charters in Duncan, Duncanville, and in Cedar Hill, and in Grand Prairie. Now, the last five years, we saw the introduction of International Leadership of Texas. They started going after the suburban areas. 10 years ago, charters were primarily going into urban school districts. And they were going into areas where the schools weren't performing as well. But now, they are looking for the Kellers, the Planos, the Lewisvilles. And we're seeing a surge of the Ideas, the International Leadership's basis. It's huge. And when, when the state opened the door a few years ago, now, charters in other states are trying to look to figure out how they can come into Texas.
It's interesting to me, the southeast corner is Addison. It's on page 17. And kind of what you referenced happening in other districts there, were apartments that were like 40, 45 years old, lots of three bedrooms, tons of kids coming out of them. And then, they started doing teardowns and building many, much more storied buildings with one-bedrooms, and not room for really families. They also, DISD put a school right across the street in DISD there. Did you, so, I see... Did you, so I see a lot of little green dots there because a lot of that continues to redevelop. Did you consider the open borders that our neighboring districts have?
Well...
The impact it may kind of, or is that like in there with the charters?
Well, we, we base our projections on the pattern that, that we see right now. And so no doubt, you know, districts have started opening their borders. And it's become not only competitive amongst charters and privates, but now we're seeing competition amongst school districts. Keller, which is where I lived for many years, has Carroll to the east and Great Vine Colleyville also to the east. Both of those districts opened up their boundaries within the last five years and started siphoning kids away from Keller ISD. And then the Westlake Academy opened a charter school. And then International Leadership opened. So there is definitely more and more competition resulting from more and more districts deciding to open their boundaries to allow for districts to come in. Now, I have built these projections based on the patterns of the out-of-district transfers that we see at this time. So should you change that strategy, then it would result in a difference in the output.
So a different subject, but the Westlake Academy, where did they open their charter school?
In the city of Westlake.
Okay.
And it was the first city charter of its kind. There may not be another city charter school.
It's been there a while.
It has.
The city-owned, I mean, it's like a dozen or so years. The city manager is also the school superintendent.
Yeah, it's crazy.
Which is a very unusual. I thought maybe when you said that, that maybe they'd launched into Keller and I was going to be like, oh, my gosh.
Well, the majority of their students are coming from Keller.
Oh, okay.
They're not just...
Yeah, because there's not many residents in Westlake. Yes?
Since with the concern, I do want to say the positive on page 16. I see the little dots of, that represent the students outside of our bound, right? Those are our students that are actually outside of the CFB boundaries. So I think that's a really positive thing to see of students that are wanting to come into CFB. So I, I really do like that, that information. I would like to find out why they're coming into CFB. I mean, do we track that? Do we have that data, why they're choosing to come here? Or do we know if they're applying to some of our academy, you know, the programs or...
No, we don't at this time, but we're, we're going to. So that's one of the pieces we were looking at. If I'm not mistaken, that was a little over 700. I don't know, I'm looking over here. But it was something like 713-ish children that, that were coming in. And so we had that log by the, the various schools, a lot of them out of the Dallas ISD. But we're going to start to fine tune a little more on exactly why did you choose to come here versus staying in your current residence?
And then I know we have the conversations, maybe not officially, in some of our schools. You know, why are you leaving or that and tracking that data? But I think taking the step also, why your reentry survey? Why are you coming back and making sure we're compiling and starting a history of that data? So we can see what, well, I mean, for some of those changes, maybe that will help the middle school, you know, as well. So kind of an exit survey and entry as well, reentry.
Bringing their children into district, don't know the percentage.
Still a value add. We've got the staff and the kids. I mean, that's a, that's a great thing.
Yeah. I suspect maybe not a good number of those are staff employees, kids. It, it could be a majority.
I still think it's positive.
Oh, it is?
Because those staff could choose to leave their students in their own districts. And maybe it's convenience or whatever, but they're bringing their students to CFB. So I'm still going to consider it a positive.
Another interesting question is of the reentries, how many have been rejected from a charter school? You know, that's, would be something, a woman stopped me at Walmart and was telling me that she, at the high school level, they're getting kids that are being booted out of a neighboring charter school because they don't think they'll pass the test. So that's sometimes would be a concern.
Sure.
Go ahead.
Correctly, you don't anticipate in the next dozen, 10, 15, 20 years that we are going to be in a position where we would have to be building new school facilities because of student growth?
I mean, it looks like when you take care of the...
La Valita? Yep.
When you address La Valita and then Freeman, it, it looks like you are getting close to where you're, you're in pretty good spot there with your elementary campuses.
So I think, Mr. Templeton, we appreciate your presentation and we've all got some interesting information to digest.
Thank you. My pleasure to be here.
The next agenda item is number six, items for discussion and/or action. We did not have any items removed from the consent agenda. So we will move to item 6B. 6B is consider approval of architect assignment for Phase 2 bond projects. Mr. Mulrooney?
All right. Good evening, members of the board. Dr. Chapman, thank you for this opportunity to present our architectural selection for 2018 Bond Series 2. Quick look at the Bond Series itself. We've got the high school project, which would be Newman Smith, gets major renovation. Middle school, major renovation of Perry. Blaylock and Long get minor renovations, mainly in the mechanical and kitchen, roof, those types of functions. Over in the elementary side, we have six projects, Farno, McCoy, Rosemead, Carrollton, McCamey, and Rainwater. These are all going to be projects fairly similar to McQuater. So mechanical systems and roofs for the, the larger dollar values there, down to minor interior, library, maker space type of renovations for some of those lower values. And then Sandridge Nautatorium has its upgrade in Series 2 as well. Learning our lessons from Series 1, having two architects at the table was fantastic. Good competition, gave us a competitive edge there. What we also realized is that three doesn't keep enough folks engaged. We want to make sure we have the attention of, of the best architects available. So we designed two packages comprised of the middle school and stadium. So that would be Perry, Blaylock, Long, and the stadium at about 48.6 million. And then a high school elementary package with Newman Smith and then the six elementary schools taking 46.9 million. So good even split between the two groups. We went to our high performers, LPA and Huckabee have done excellent work. And we introduced VLK. And we went to town analyzing what they've done, looked at their experience. We then asked the firms to give us proposals on how they would manage these packages, who they assigned to work on them, and some specific examples of how they could flourish under these circumstances. We met as a committee, voted independently, and came to the conclusion that VLK best suited the middle school and LPA has done an outstanding job with our elementaries. And we'd like to continue that. So the recommendation is that VLK be assigned Perry Middle School, Blaylock, Long, and Sandridge Stadium. And LPA be assigned Newman Smith High School, McCoy, Farno, Rosemead, Carrollton, Rainwater, and McCamey. The schedule would be to start design about as soon as possible, work through the summer to get construction documents, bid through the, through the winter and start construction May of 2021. There'll be two summers of construction, so that would run through 2022. So very similar to the package that we have, a year of design, bid through the winter, start construction for the summer, work the summer, plus the school year, plus the summer. Be ready for the kids in that August. The recommendation to the board is to please approve the selection of the architects. VLK for Package B1, Middle School and Stadium. LPA for B2, High School and Elementaries.
Board members, any questions for Mr. Mulrooney? I wonder what's left after this wave?
More elementaries. We've got Creekview and Ranchview, which while smaller, still have lots of opportunities. And definitely a lot of the lessons that we're learning and we're getting sharper and better about implementing them. So getting those dollars to go even further for us. And then, of course, that strategic part of asset management and long-term planning. We want to have a good comprehensive plan so we know what our future looks like. We can't go 16 years without another capital improvement, without having a very strategic plan of what we do.
And because of how we designed the packages that last grouped as many of our newer facilities, because we went by the ranking from our facility assessment. So that's why they're all grouped sort of at the end. So you'll see, you know, the lobby to Ranchview, some of those campuses in that group.
Board members, any questions on that? Looks like you've answered everybody's questions. This is a action item. Mr. Shakman?
I would move that the board approve the presentation of VLK Architects for Project B1, LPA Architects for B2, with the details provided and the time schedules provided in the presentation.
Thank you.
So we have a motion by Mr. Shakman. We have a second by Mr. Ramos. All those in favor? So we have six in favor. So Mr. Mulrooney, it looks like you're our next agenda item, 6C, consider guaranteed maximum price for artificial field turf improvements.
Well, staying up here, started. Thank you for the opportunity to present our artificial turf GMP to you this evening. Just a quick recap, because like we said, a strategic plan and asset management is critical to the functionality of the district. And as we take each of these steps, we need to know where they fit in. So of course, the first project that we did, I think it was actually first few months that I was here, we did the indoor turf facilities. We got those facilities up and going. Second to that, we took on the practice fields. And we restarted those two practice fields, one at Ranchview, one at Creekview, which freed up our maintenance folks to focus on the, the field at Turner and Smith. All of this is in line with our goals for CFB athletics. The first one is to look around at our comparable districts. Who are folks playing against? What facilities do they have? So when they travel, they have the same experience. When they come here, they have a better experience, as we can. Maximize the playtime for our students because we know that nothing beats time on the field. There's must substitutes, but time on the field makes great athletes. And that also expands the opportunities, not just for the athletes, but all the supporting folks as well, band, and all the other functions. And then finding that build of school pride through the feeder patterns right from the middle school all the way through to the high school. As we spoke through the demographics, we saw those gaps in sixth grade and ninth grade. This is where we start to make it. Because when you're a lion in fifth grade, you're going to be a lion all the way through. If you're going to be a Trojan, you're going to see that all the way through. And that comes with the facilities that we can create to support that. So coming onto the artificial turf, like I said, the play surface becomes critical. We lost 114 days of, of playtime last year because of weather. And so we had to take that. So our focus was big undertaking, but let's address the surfaces. After we did the surveys and studies, the pack started to split into two very distinctive groups. Ranchview, Creekview, their facilities, plus the Turner and Smith football facilities. The turf fields will go where they're currently located. It makes sense. It fits into the long-term forecast. It fits all the needs that we need. The Creekview, sorry, Turner and Smith baseball and softball facilities started to really throw us a curveball, pun intended. As we started to take on the challenge, while we have the money to do the turf, we don't necessarily have the resources to do all the supporting functions that go with relocating those fields. So rather than derailing everything, understanding that we are on a path, step by step, to move this bar forward, we took on the challenge to present two packages. The first one would be eight fields. Four football fields, two baseball, two softball. This would get a majority of the work started and we can complete that. We know what those fit and we know their expectations. While this starts, we then focus on the four remaining fields, the two softball, two baseball for Turner and Smith. So this starts to look like this. Part one, we take on the football fields first. Go in, unfortunately, our soil conditions here are even bad by bad standards. Three to five is, three would be nice. Five-foot subgrade preparation is nasty. We're at eight. So that's going to be tough. So we get the folks cut loose, we start on the football fields, take about 90 days. We then carry those crews straight on to the Creekview and Ranchview softball and baseball. One of the things that we'll pick up along the way is over at Creekview and Ranchview, the softball field is a little larger than expected. It's an anomaly, it's happened. But like I said, on that step to step to making things better as we go along, we'll bring that outfield in to the standard 200-foot, six-foot fence with a nice windscreen that celebrates the lady Mustangs or lady wolves. The other thing we'll do is we noticed that Ranchview, get that right, yeah. Noticed at Ranchview, our bleachers facilities are not in line with where some of the other campuses are and certainly not in line with what we're expecting to build at Kelly Field. Again, correcting as we go, we'll bring those up to standard with new bleachers and dugouts at Ranchview Baseball and Softball, bringing that in line with what we oppose, propose in Phase 2. Got to pay for it all. The board's been wise, setting money aside. 6.5 million in 18, 19, and another 8 million last year brings us to athletic fund of 14.5. This would contribute towards Creekview, Turner, and Smith at 8.2. The TIF would pick up the Ranchview portion at 5.4. Total GMP is 13.6. Gets a chunk of that first portion taken care of. Has the 6.2 set aside for Kelly Field. Like I said, this is the money to do the turf part, as we had discussed, but we need to come and find the resources to do the parking, the concession stands, the lights, all the, the magic that goes along with that grass. Studying Kelly Field, just a quick preview. Like we said, we studied this pretty closely. We understand that the four fields will fit on the site with substantial parking and a new concession building. Does come with a cost. So 5.2 in turf and fencing, everything that happens on the playfield, another 5.8 for everything that happens outside of that fencing area, fees and permits brings up, up to 12.1. This leaves a lot of work to be done, but we will still reach our goal in October, turfing 12 fields. So quick recap, November, December, we were doing the RFQ process. Here we are today with part one. We'll be back in April and May for part two. In the meantime, we can release the folks to start construction on the football fields. They'll run three months of construction through till June. Ties nicely to the end of the football, softball, baseball season. They roll straight over into Creekview and Ranchview softball and baseball and keep their construction. Lots of Fs for part two. Some of the things that we'll need to work through is permitting, securing those additional funds, things like that. If we can have that conversation in May, we can release the crews and they'll be ready before the 2021 baseball softball season. So that'd be the Phase 2 tentative construction. And we'll meet here at the finish line at the end of the year.
You know, let's, let's also mention why we're even contemplating moving Turner Baseball to Kelly.
Yes, sir. So one of the, let me dive back just into the aerials so we can just see. When we, when I came to measuring Turner Baseball over here on the left, it was rather interesting. The one outfield is a little larger than the other. So as long as you're batting in the right direction, you're doing okay. The other thing is if you happen to have tennis, keep your back to the net so the fly ball takes out your opponent. It's a difficult fit. We've had to put screens against this part of the building to stop the fly balls there. And additionally, we're looking at Turner's grand vision. As we've discussed, as we look at Turner, I haven't let them start looking. We've got $30 million to spend there, but how does that fit into Turner's grand vision? And Turner's landlocked. And really, that entry off of Josie doesn't lend it to be the jewel that it should be. By relocating this field, what we would do is provide an opportunity to create a new entry that comes along the gym with a new pass-through lane and some more parking that really starts to celebrate that campus for what it should be. That's accommodated in the shift of moving that baseball field. So it starts to check a lot of boxes. It also brings softball into compliance so that the softball, baseball is together. At Smith, over on this side, similar type of constraints. We have that power line easement. So we have that one light pole that crept in. We would fix that. We could have bleachers both sides, that's a plus. So we take a lot of those answers, solve a lot of those problems. It's going to take some work. Like I said, it's not going to be easy to get Kelly Field to lay out right or the permits, the soils, and everything else to get there. But we're up for the challenge because you know it's going to be the right solution. So action item, I would request the board approve the GMP to Hallis Construction for 13.6, 13,688,168 dollars to release part one of the artificial turf construction. 13.6, 13 million 688,168 dollars to release part one of the artificial turf construction. 13 million 688,168. As long as I did my homework, it should match all the backup in the packets. I'm only a little bit dyslexic.
Board members, do we have a motion? Yes. Mr. Bajic?
I move that we approve the GMP for Hellis Construction in the amount of 13 million 688,168 for the construction of the fields as presented tonight of the Phase One.
We have a motion by Mr. Bajic, a second by Mr. Matthews. So board members, any discussion? So I have a couple of questions. Go ahead first.
Sorry. Set of four, this is a much-needed investment and improvement for our student athletes, for our facilities, for everybody that supports CFB, so I'm really excited to see this. I want to make sure there was an understanding on the schedule of the Smith and Turner, while we're not approving those tonight. There's no, and that when that comes back in May with the securing of the funding and the permits, but the intent is not to delay Smith and Turner from that completion for the seasons next year.
Yes, ma'am.
Correct.
Yes, ma'am.
Anything else?
No, I'm just excited.
Okay. So I'm curious, it's got a proposal alternate to, an additive alternate to provide and install EcoTherm and fill in lieu of real fill for the football fields. What's the difference?
Yes, ma'am. So we're currently specifying the rubber fill, which is fairly typical for surrounding districts, the Eco.
So which one's the rubber fill, real fill?
Real fill, yes, ma'am. The EcoTherm is the first upgrade towards some cooler material. It's lighter in color, and it has a type of a high-density foam component to it. It does take on a little bit of water, which does help cool things down, and it's a lighter color. It's fair substantial cost. Some of the other districts are starting to opt for it, but we haven't found clear evidence that it's better. There is one third product out there, which is actually almost an organic fiber that has to be watered. Nobody's tried it yet, so we won't be even bringing that.
Recycled something.
We're taking a lot of challenges. I think right now we know that the real fill is a solid, well-tested material, and that's where our recommendation would be.
Okay, so the number that Ms. Bajic read doesn't include the additive alternate? Okay. And then at the bottom of that unnumbered page, it's got exclusions. And number two is poor subgrade soils. And it says they contracted with Braun Intertek for a geotech investigation, pricing to be adjusted to recommendations of report performed. Is that past tense, future tense? What's the scope?
It's a cover of future tense for any work that hasn't been drilled. All the proposed locations have been drilled, but if we decided that we wanted to put a set of bleachers somewhere that hadn't been, add one at a location that they hadn't had the opportunity to explore, then they have the option to have it drilled and add some money.
And then what is the subgrade preparation that you reference? What is that?
The, it would be an OverX soil moisture conditioning. So we bring in some scrapers and basically dig down, take that material, lay it out, plow it, and then add water to it so it expands, and then compact it back in lifts of six inches at a time, once we get it back up to grade. We then have to add a one-foot rock layer, helps with drainage, but it also adds some stability before we have the artificial turf construction on top of that.
So no lime or anything like that, just you're just pre-swelling your soils?
Pre-swelling. We had a, when we were doing the three and the five-foot options, there was a six-inch, sorry, a four-inch lime cap. When we ended up going so deep, they pulled the lime cap and expanded the rock.
So what's the characteristic of your one-foot rock layer? Is it deal or is it big rocks?
Well, it'd be one-inch crushed rock.
Okay.
But that again is underneath the, the.
Yeah.
Five, sorry, the membrane fiber layer, then there's a rubber mat for impact, and then the turf on top of that.
Yeah, our soils are bad, and Irving is worse than even Carrollton. The high-density polyethylene pipe, is that something you've used before?
Yes, that's for the drainage.
Okay. I've used it and had bad experiences, so, but a lot of it is the backfill around it.
Yes, ma'am.
And making sure that it's put in correctly. Okay. So we have a motion in a second. Do we have any other discussion? Yes, were you going to say something, Mr. Matthews?
I'd just like to say how impressed I am with your knowledge about all this stuff. I'm blown away. Thank you.
Okay, so all those in favor? So six in favor, so none opposed. Thank you, Mr. Mulrooney.
Thank you.
So item 6D, consider approval of memorandum of understanding between CFB ISD and the CFB ISD Education Foundation. Mr. Mersch? You need a microphone.
It's my honor and privilege to present the collaboration of the Education Foundation and the district in regards of the MOU you have before you. How this came to be is Executive Director of the Education Foundation, Jeff Moore, approached the district and asked the question, what can we do to enhance the relationship between the foundation and our district? So in order to do that, the first step was to seek legal counsel to see what the parameters were within the means of the law, and, because it has to be for a legitimate public purpose. So with that, we took that, and we met, a collaborative effort, and like I said, developed the MOU that you have before you. The highlights of the MOU are as follows. The term is one year from the date of signature. Automatic one-year renewals on the anniversary of the effective date. Requires a 90-day notice to terminate the agreement. The audit provision states that the foundation shall provide an annual audit of finances to you, the board, on an annual basis. And the district will continue to provide office space and office equipment. The question that drove this part of the discussion was, what expertise can the district provide to support the foundation so that they can generate more donations for our students than teachers? As a result of that conversation, that discussion, it was determined the best strategy, the most effective strategy, would provide the foundation with access to our world-class communications team so that they could support the endeavors and initiatives of the foundation through marketing, promotion, graphic design. If you'll look on page three, provision five states, the district will employ and employee or combination of employees who will be able to work a combined maximum of 25 hours per week for the foundation. If more time is needed for special events, the district chief communications officer must provide a written request to the superintendent for the additional hours, and the request must include the designated dates. The superintendent, Dr. Chapman, is his discretion as to whether to approve the request. Additionally, the district may provide up to 10 hours per month of accounting support to the foundation. Executive Director for the Education Foundation, Jeff Moore, requested to make a few comments. Please come up, Jeff.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing me a brief moment to speak. I'll be very brief. I just wanted to thank the board for taking this item under consideration. This is not a new item. We've been considering improving our relationship, improving our efforts to work hand in hand with the district. For quite a long time prior to Dr. Chapman's arrival, Dr. Chapman and I met soon after he arrived and began discussing this. So that's something that we've been working on for quite a long time. I certainly appreciate y'all's consideration. Brian, Dawn, Tanya, Scott's over here. I know he's been working hard on this as well. We sure appreciate the team that CFB has that's allowed us to prepare this. And then I have Mary here for my board today. She's done a lot of work for our board, and our board did approve this MOU as written last Thursday, so I just wanted to bring that to your attention. And thank you very much for having me here tonight, and thanks for y'all's work. Thanks.
Thank you, Jeff.
Just want to comment on this. In our discussions, this is just a start of our relationship, and we talked about our goal and our desire. Our objective is to not just have a great relationship, but have an extraordinary relationship between the district and the foundation for the benefit of our kids and our teachers. So it is recommended the Board of Trustees adopt the resolution of the Board of Trustees of the Carrollton Farmers Branch Independent School District and memorandum of understanding as presented.
Board members? Mr. Matthews?
I move that we do adopt the resolution of the Board of Trustees and the Carrollton Farmers Branch Independent School District and memorandum of understanding as presented.
So we have a motion by Mr. Matthews? A second by Mr. Shackman? Is there any discussion? Mr. Shackman?
I had a chance to talk to Mr. Moore today at some length, and we were looking at the various pieces, and all of the things that we were talking about are in here as presented. And I appreciate the foundations not only work on behalf of the district, having spent the better part of my career working with foundations and fundraising efforts, and appreciate your foundations not only support for what we do, but your enthusiasm for supporting what we do. And I, for one, am pleased to vote to make this relationship even stronger, and for your concerns for all of the ethics and responsibilities and all of that stuff that fits in the world and arena of fundraising, that the foundation does an outstanding job.
Thank you. I'm excited to see what the future holds in this collaboration, and I appreciate Dr. Chapman and Mr. Moore for bringing this to us. Any other discussion? So all those in favor? So that's six in favor and zero opposed. So I look forward to seeing the future. That brings us to item number seven, comments from board members regarding posted agenda items. Board members, do any of you have comments you wish to make at this time? I just want to say Guillermo looks very dapper. And I think we dodged a bullet on the weather problems that we could have had this morning. And so, but I appreciate, I'm sure, all the work that y'all put into being prepared for responding to weather incidents, and thank you for that, probably lots of extra hours. So ladies and gentlemen, we've reached the end of our agenda, and we are adjourned at 9:03 PM.